Are we all ready? Are we all here? Alrighty. Sorry about that. I had to give my dog something to distract themselves or they're gonna start barking. Okay, um. Is the clerk here? I didn't see her. Oh, there she is. Okay, perfect. Um, let's go ahead and call this special council meeting to order. Today is Monday, October 19th, and it is 7:02 PM. If I can please have a moment of silent meditation followed by the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
And to the republic.
For which is stand.
One nation.
Under God.
Indivisible.
With liberty. And justice for all. Uh, Madam Clerk, can we please have roll call?
Councilwoman Perella.
Here.
Councilperson Roman. Councilperson Urban.
Here.
Vice Mayor Nickerson.
Here.
Mayor Cabello.
I'm here. Um, may I have a motion to approve the agenda?
A motion to approve the agenda.
Motion made by Councilperson Urban. Is there a second?
Second motion, Madam Mayor.
Second by Vice Mayor Nickerson. All in favor, say again by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Hearing on the meeting of the agenda for the special council meeting passes this evening. Um, there are no approval of the minutes.
Master, I need to come get this cat.
I'm sorry? Oh, okay. It's okay. We all have pets. Okay. Um, there are no minutes to approve and we do not have acknowledged any special visitors. I want to thank everybody for being here. Welcome everybody who's on the call this evening. Um, good and welfare. At this time, anybody in good and welfare would like to. Anybody in the attendees of good and welfare? See none? Once, twice? Okay. We're gonna go right into the agenda item. We have no agenda items. We're gonna, we have no resolutions. It's not unfinished business. We're going right into new business. And, um, K1, discussion and consideration of the termination of interim village attorney. Uh, I just wanted to say a couple of things. I cannot be on today's meeting the entire night. Um, I, I do have a meeting, but I wanted to just pop in real quick. You all have quorum, so you all will be able to conduct the meeting. I'll pass the gavel over shortly to Vice Mayor Nickerson. I just wanted to hear a little bit about where you guys are all at and then my perspective as far as the termination of the interim attorney. The one thing I, I did reach out to was just Plasurbia to find out what the hiccup would be like, if any, uh, as it relates to the agenda items that we have in October. So I don't know what the, uh, the, uh, the outcome or the immediate plan is gonna be, if it's gonna be immediate or it's gonna be in November. So I wanted to hear a little bit about that because I think the next discussion, uh, maybe with, um, however this meeting goes with, um, when I leave today. It's just a discussion of the October items. I asked Juan just to give me kind of like, um, what the first, second, third order effect were. And I think the biggest one would be the comp plan. As you all know, we need the attorney to sign, sign for legal sufficiency. And I think the only ramification with the comp plan was that was the most time sensitive. And then there was also, um, the water supply amendment that goes with it that has to happen afterwards. So just keep that in mind. As far as this, this is planned for October. Um, and that's the, the, pretty much the input that I wanted to give as it relates to, when and if this goes into fruition as far as a possible change of attorney. So just, I ask you all, um, council members, just keep that in mind. Um, as far as the upcoming agenda items. Having said that, um, I'll open it up for, and if I hop off on, if I hop off soon, it's because I do have a meeting. So when I do, Vice Mayor Nickerson, I just pass the gavel on to you and you can, I can take it from there. Um, at this point, we're gonna go right into, I believe it's K1. Um, discussion and consideration of the termination of interim village attorney. Um, I'll open it up to whoever, um, wants to start, Vice Mayor Nickerson, Councilperson Urban, or Councilperson Perella.
I certainly let Vice Mayor Nickerson speak if he wanted to, but I, I did call the meeting. And I, I was prepared to at least, uh, address residents, let them know why I called this meeting. Okay. So, a short time ago, uh, RFQ process for selection of a permanent attorney for the village was completed. An attorney was selected almost immediately following this. It is my opinion that it's essentially pettiness, uh, kinda took hold of the situation. And, um, we are still dealing with, uh, in my opinion, uh, the, uh, pettiness that resulted from a decision that was made a short time ago. Outside of that, I just want to remind everyone that throughout the RFQ process, which took almost a year, from the time it was decided to be undertaken. The statements were very consistent from Attorney Powell that whatever the council decided, uh, would be what he would support. There were repeated statements over a period of several months, um, as the discussion progressed towards the completion of the RFQ process. And that was the consistent statement from Attorney Powell. Near the end of the RFQ process, an underlying circumstance occurred and that was the situation with our clerk. So, for me personally, as the RFQ process came to a close, the way that that situation was handled, continues to be handled, was really what settled it for me in terms of, in terms of choosing to go with, uh, any other than Powell. And so, uh, from the time that that decision was. Maybe if you, Mr. Geller, if you would please, uh, just mute yourself. I, I think your mic is still on. Thank you. And so, uh, for me personally. Is of petty arguments, why Attorney Powell should remain. And so, uh, in a nutshell, that is why I called this meeting. I'm not gonna wait till the 27th. I'm not gonna wait until the comp plan is done. I'm not gonna wait till the water ordinances come out after that. This needs to happen tonight, in my opinion, and that's why I called the meeting. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Nickerson?
Uh, yeah, Madam Mayor, how are you? Alright, so, how you guys doing? Um, I'm gonna see everybody here tonight who's joining us. I understand what, uh, Councilperson Urban is saying. Um, you know, if anybody, uh, says RFQ process, um, has probably felt the vindictiveness, um, it's been me. So, it's kinda what that is. But I did wanna go through some stuff really quickly, you guys. Bear with me for a second. I'm gonna share the screen. Alright, so I think we have two kinda choices or two questions. Um, or, you know, kinda like what's going on or whatever for today. So can everybody see my screen here? You guys good? You guys can see it? Alright. So this is the, this is Attorney Powell's contract. So the first thing is the attorney contract, um, versus the village charter, right? So Attorney Powell's contract, show everybody who's watching, you go down to section six. This is what, um, right here, the effective date. So if you're stuck to see, the effective date and the termination. So, you know, it just says that when the effective date, when it took effect, um, it should agree, it should go from month to month. And down here, it starts to get, you know, the, you know, we can turn, the village may terminate this agreement, um, and it's so discretion upon the affirmative vote of no less than three of the duly elected or appointed members of the council. You guys, we all know that. And, and so this is where it gets murky, right? So the notice of determination must be scheduled at a regularly scheduled council meeting and advertised in the council agenda prior to the council meeting. And so this is in his contract. Now, it's his contract versus the village charter. Or right here where it says, um, right here in the section, section 3.07, the council shall from time to time appoint, you know, an attorney and law firm, and then it says right here, the village shall, um, the village attorney shall report to the council. The village attorney may be removed by the council at any time by vote of the council with not less than three members, thereof, voting in the affirmative. So the first question that we have here, you guys, is what takes precedent? Is it the attorney contract or is it the village charter? That's our first question. Our second question, this would come up, you know, a little bit later, but our second question is, I'm just gonna take, you know, time now while I have, you know, while I have a thought. The second question is, let's say, for example, if we say that the, you know, the, the, the contract takes precedence, let's say for example. And let's say if we're going to, I know, uh, Councilperson Urban doesn't wanna do it, but let's say if we're going to move into the October meeting, the October full council meeting. The question then is, and maybe our energy should go to this, the question then is, because, and remember, in Attorney Powell's contract, it talks about how, how it has to be noticed. So let's say we say we're gonna do it at the October meeting, or, or, or Councilperson Urban's gonna try to do it at the October meeting, try to get an interim, uh, new interim attorney. It says here that it has to be scheduled at a regular council meeting, but it has to be advertised in the agenda prior to the meeting. So the question there is, is that, because usually when we do the, the council agendas, it's usually the mayor that kinda puts the stuff on the, on the agenda. As far as, like, I've been here, that's in the practice. I didn't see anywhere in the charter where it says that it has to be the mayor. So the question, so the second part of it is, let's say if we, we decide we're gonna do this at the October meeting, could Councilperson Urban say, "I want add it to the agenda prior to the meeting", you know, the same verbiage that he has tonight for the special meeting? Because if he can't do that, then, in a sense, you know, whoever the mayor is, and I say American people do it, but I'm saying whoever the mayor is, they would, they, they control the agenda to where they can block out, you know, council, you know, Attorney Powell, you know, that being advertised in the agenda. If the mayor controls the entire agenda, they can just block it out, block it out, block it out forever. And if that's the case, then you can have a mayor just block it out till, for the next five years. If the mayor controls the agenda by his or herself, or her or his self. So those are the two questions. The first one is, does it, are we gonna look at the attorney contract or the village charter? Which one are we gonna take? The second question is, is that if we do take the attorney contract and we do go, and, and, and Councilperson Urban or whatever tries to put on the agenda for the October full council meeting, is he allowed to, or does the mayor have full, um, full, um, control over what goes or doesn't go on the agenda? Those are the two questions, you guys. Um, let me just say this before I get out of here. Um, and, and, you know, send back to, uh, Mayor Cabello. You guys all know how I am. I just think we need to be really careful. And like I said, when I first got on, I understand what you're saying, Councilperson Urban, as far as the vindictiveness and the pettiness. I've been feeling it more than anybody, right? But, you guys, we have to ask ourselves as a, as a government, how do we wanna operate? Because I'm just scared that if we, you know, because there's an argument that, you know, a contract shouldn't supersede the charter, which I understand, but I'm also scared that I don't wanna start a precedence of us breaking contracts that we passed or adopted either. And like I said, I've been feeling the brunt of everything from Attorney Powell as far as the vindictiveness and the pettiness, but we just have to be really careful of that because we don't wanna get into a, we don't wanna get into a, 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 a practice of honoring the contracts that, that, that make us feel, you know, that, that we like, but not honoring the contracts that we don't like. You guys, you, this is the thing with me. I've always been the type of person to where I would rather, even if it's temporary, I would rather lose do, doing the right thing than win doing the wrong thing. So we just have to really ask ourselves those questions, you guys, you know, as, um, you know, if everything goes, you know, the way it's been going, you know. I just wanna see and I wanna, you know, do my part for this community, do my part for this village to where I'm trying to stabilize things, you guys. I want things to be clean. I don't, I'm tired of the murkiness. Right? I just want things to be clean. So we just really need to ask ourselves, especially those two questions, attorney contract and village charter. And, um, if we do try to go to the October meeting, um, you know, does the mayor have last say and full control over the agenda to where, um, you know, whoever the mayor is, at any time going forward, um, this is a good question for, you know, years and years from now, anytime going forward, whoever the mayor is, can they purposely keep something off of the agenda? You know, because when we go to the meetings, we do have a pool of the agenda where somebody can add something to the agenda, but if you look at his contract, it's has to be advertised in the council agenda prior to the council meeting. So that means that you can't even put it on when you go to a pool of the agenda and add it to the agenda. That doesn't even fit the contract. So those are the things, um, we just have to, uh, look at closely. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Um, so I want, I want, uh, Vice Mayor Nickerson, you brought up one good point, but I wanna add something. So I've been elected for 12 years and I've served under two mayors, Mayor Black and Mayor Davis, and they never did that. They never denied anything ever going on agenda. Um, in my six years, I've never denied anything going on agenda. I may have moved it from one meeting to another, but I think when you're talking something as serious as this, um, um, and if you all would have put it in the October agenda, I would never say no. Uh, that, I mean, because that's democracy. You, you, if you want something, I say, generally, things go before a committee, but obviously in something like this, it would take the precedence. And if you all put that in the October, uh, an October agenda or whatever month that is. But in the time that I've been here, no mayor, including myself, has denied anything to ever go on agenda. We've never done that here. Uh, I can, I can, I, from, I mean, I was, while you were speaking that, I was thinking that and I'm like, yeah, there maybe there've been some things that'd be like, oh no, our agenda's too full, put it for the next one. Uh, but, and especially now with this whole online, but never, ever, ever have I denied anything to go on the agenda. What we have done as a governing body is, I, um, is, for example, if it's a, it's a matter that's serious and not all members of the council, we've talked about it and then look, and then we said, because this happened a few times when we had another council member that missed regular meetings. Um, and when he wasn't on, we were like, okay, we're gonna talk about it, but we're not gonna vote tonight. We're gonna give him another month. And then in the following month, when he didn't show up, then we voted on it. Because at that point, we're like, we gave him, we gave him, um, the notice. Um, so, and then I wanted to add the other thing to the point that you said is, you know, as far as I agree with where you're at with, with the contracts, but something for you all to think about is in moving forward with contracts, it should not supersede. It should, it should be in line with the charter. So and moving forward, you wanting to take a look at that, you know, because contracts should sort of be in line with the charter. Because it's not the first time we've sort of been in this little bit of predicament as far as what comes first, a charter or a contract. Um, but I see a couple of hands up. I think it's, uh, Councilperson Perella. Um, go ahead.
Yeah, well, um, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, and thank you for clarifying the second, uh, question, um, that, so that we're clear on that, right, Vice Mayor? Okay, so, um, yeah, and, and, and when it comes to that, I was, it, it, it actually, uh, blowed my mind that a contract was written like that. I don't know who wrote that contract, who was working on behalf of the, of the village, because obviously it wasn't looking for the best interest of the village when you have a contradictory of, uh, an individual and that's serving, um, the village and is serving to the pleasure of the council to go against what our charter, which is pretty much, you know, the, the rules and regulations of, of, of the government of our village. You know, and, uh, it is just whoever negotiated that, uh, it's, to me, still not clear who did it. But it's definitely wasn't, um, uh, work. It's, it's, it's not, um, it wasn't in the best interests of the village. And, and now we're in these predicament of, like, you know, whether the charter or the contracts supersede the charter, I think it should be the charter, the one that dictates what, how we conduct business. Whether it has to be reviewed or revised or whatever, then we move forward with that. But it is what it is right now and, um, to me, um, it is just, it's just not, not, not right. It's, yeah, that's all. But since, you know, the 27th is, is right, uh, is next, you know, it's right there and, um, and, uh, we will have the opportunity to actually include it on that meeting and have the proper, um, advertisement and all of that. I mean, you guys, uh, can decide. I mean, and we have a lawyer, um, here that he could give us, uh, some, uh, legal advice if, if, if that's what we need right now. But I think we should go by what, whatever the charter says. That we, you know, we can terminate, uh, especially when it's an interim, um, position. It's not even our contracted, uh, per se, lawyer, so.
Um, thank you, Councilperson Perella. Uh, Councilperson Urban, give me a hand up.
I do. So, on the first point, regarding what the contract says, and as that relates to the second point regarding what the charter says, I've, I called it, I've spoken to ethics for the past two weeks about this. Alright, it, every council person in Miami County should have a ROHO cell phone number. I have his cell phone number. Powell's talked to him. I've talked to him. I know some of you guys have talked to him. I have zero fear about moving forward tonight with honoring the decision the council made and acknowledging the wastefulness and the pettiness that was immediately engaged in by Attorney Powell, not to exclude threatening to sue the village. I don't see any way that one more day with Attorney Powell is beneficial to the village. In fact, I believe it to be consistently costly. So, we'll have this discussion on the 27th again if you want to, but I do not understand the apprehensiveness of honoring the council's decision and removing an adversary to the village.
Uh, thank you, Councilman Urban. Any other comments from the members of the council?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, just one more comment, please, if I may. I understand, um, Councilperson Urban, and I'm not, trust me, I'm not in, in, in complete disagreement with you. But I think that we can kind of do both things, right? So I understand what you're saying, but I just think we just need to be really, really careful about, you know, breaking contracts that the village adopted. I understand you weren't, I understand you weren't.
Let's see a receipt for who wrote the contract, and I will have that discussion.
I understand, but we were still, but, but we, it was still adopted by the village, right? So we would still be breaking a contract that the village adopted, Councilperson Urban. And that's just, that's just a real dangerous precedent to get involved with because we're gonna have many contracts. We have many contracts that were entered in now and, and that are entered in. We, we don't want anybody breaking contracts with us. I mean, this is part of the problem that, um, we're going through with, you know, Pinoni right now, which is that in their contract, they say when they got to a certain threshold, they will contact us before they're spending more. And that's our argument with them because they didn't, you know, they didn't, um, um, you know, take care of the contract and they didn't abide by, you know, that, that contract that they have with us. I just think it's really dangerous if we get into the practice of doing that type of stuff because, you know, people can do shady stuff all the time and when it's done in, in a way that you don't, that, that, you know, you, I'm saying like you are a person. And when, when people do shadiness all the time and if it's done in a way that an individual doesn't agree with, then, like, for example, like, you know, the interim Attorney Powell's contract, what, what attorney was hired to write it? Okay, so stuff like that. But, but we can't do things the opposite way and not do them, like, absolutely buy the book either, you guys. That's what I'm saying.
Well, but I'm sorry to interrupt, but it's what it is. I mean, it's in the charter. If, if anything, the contract is the one violating the charter. You know, so, I, I don't agree with that. And, and like I said, whoever, whoever, um, wrote that contract or was like, you know, negotiating that contract wasn't looking for the best interest of the village or didn't know what our charter, uh, said. And, and it said, it's not a contract for, uh, 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 it's an interim, um, position that wasn't, it's supposed to have that many regulations. It is a month by month and it should be terminated at any time.
And has, has there been any statement?
By the council, you guys.
Has there been, has there, has there been any statement saying which entity wrote that contract or who reviewed it for the village? Let's see, we're getting into semantics. That, we know the charter sets precedent over the contract. We have a cloud over the contract, not the charter. And again, I will tell you, I've had more than one conversation with the director of the Commission on Ethics to Miami-Dade County, and I am 100% comfortable proceeding tonight. You wanna kick it down to 27th? I, we'll see, we'll see.
I understand your frustration, Councilperson Urban. Trust me. I understand. I understand your frustration, but we are, you guys, we are a government entity and we do have to, like, we do have to do things the, the, the clean and the right way. And that's the only thing I'm worried about. That's the only thing I'm worried about.
Look, let's call it what it is. That's what I mean by you're looking at from the wrong side. We spent a year going through an RFQ process. We already selected another attorney. All of the, all of the shadiness, all of the, all of the impropriety, right? As far as the cutting corners and, and, uh, things like this are directly from Attorney Powell's camp. Okay? Every, every argument presented since the night that decision was made is, is what is called a, is what is called a technicality. Now, technicalities are important not to violate. I agree with you 100% that you should not go again, like, just because it's a technicality doesn't mean it's not a rule. I, 100%, I'm on board with that. I do not flaunt or, uh, uh, flout like technicalities, right? Do not fly in the face of technicalities. The technicalities I'm talking about are someone who was removed from a position and is holding onto the door jam and, in my opinion, forcing our hand. So what, so, so then instead would he say, "Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. We'll pay you another $8,000 in November. I'm sorry." I don't think so. I do not think so. I promise you, there's gonna be something else on the 27th. There was something the day after we decided to go with a different attorney. There was something two days later. There was something four days later. There was something five days later. There's something that, the reason we're here tonight and not last week, there's a reason we're gonna push it to the 27th instead of tonight. There's gonna be a reason on the 27th to push it to the end of November. I don't understand how you don't see this. This is ridiculous, absurd, and a waste totally of everybody's time and resources, especially the residents.
I understand your frustration, Councilperson Urban, but you guys, if this was, I think that it would be different. I understand your frustration, Councilperson Urban, but you guys, if this was, I, I think that it would be different, you guys, if this was like, you know, we had to, you know, wait like a year or something like that. But first of all, the 27th is right around the corner. It's right around the corner.
How many weeks has it been since we chose a different attorney? How many weeks has it been?
It's right around the corner, and we've already heard that anybody from the council can put anything on the agenda to satisfy the contract. That way, you guys, if we do it that way, then we are satisfying and not breaking any side of anything. The charter, the contract, we, we are in alignment and we are on, in a good, um, space with everything.
Well, let's have it clear, whether we decide tonight or not, we're not violating the charter. We align with the charter, actually.
Well, I understand, but I'm talking about the, the contract and the charter, we can do both at the same time. But I, I understand, Councilperson Urban, Madam Mayor, um, that's it.
I just wanted to, uh, I didn't mean to cut you guys off, but as I mentioned in the beginning, I have to get off for a meeting. Um, I wanted to see how far I was able to stay on. Um, I will, let me, the clerk will let me know we all decided moving forward. Um, I wanted to make one more point. Um, no, that, that, that's it. Um, I, I don't know if you guys, Vice Mayor Nikerson, as I said, um, when I opened up the meeting, I'll pass the gavel on to you. I don't know if you wanted to open up for the attendees. Um, if not, then I will, um, speak to the clerk and the manager in the morning, and I will see you all at the next council meeting, which is next Tuesday. Okay? But I, I apologize, but I do have to go. I'll talk to, uh, Ms. Pamela, I'll talk to you in the morning, okay? Thank you all, have a good night.
Does anybody else from the, um, from the council have anything else today you want to say before I go to the attendees, you guys? Um, Councilperson Urban, Councilperson Sirella, Madam Manager, Attorney Geller, I see you're here, you want to say something? Um, yeah, right, thank you.
Well, um, let me say that I'm happy to, to make a comment if that's requested. I'm not here on behalf of myself.
Of course, of course.
Happy to offer any thoughts that I might have if that's requested, but I, I don't put myself forward to tell the council what to do. Attorneys give advice.
Of course, of course, we're pressing that. And this, this also makes sense, you guys, for everybody watching, because, um, after the panel, I was going to go to the attendees anyway. And if Attorney Geller would have been in the attendees, I would have brought him over anyway, so it's kind of like the same thing happening. So, Council, um, Attorney Geller, if you, please, if you would.
Well, I, you know, I, I've looked at the two documents, and as was said, it is my opinion, and that's all any attorney has, is their own opinion, that this is not really a close issue. You have a village charter. You're required to abide by your village charter. The village charter is the same as a constitution. Uh, states and the country has a constitution. Counties and municipalities have a charter. It is basically your constitution. It is what governs you. If you adopt an ordinance that contradicts the charter, the ordinance is void, because you can't contradict your charter. You can amend your charter, but you can't contradict it. If you adopt a resolution that contradicts your charter or that is adopted in a way that would lead to a violation of your charter, the ordinance is void, because you cannot contradict your charter. Contracts are adopted by resolution. There was a resolution to adopt that contract. I don't know who was on council when it was done. I don't know how it was done, but I know that there is obviously one provision in that contract that directly contradicts your charter. The reason that's the case is that when the village council thinks it needs to make a change, it has the right, but more than that, it has the duty to do that. You have a charter that says when three members of council desire to make a change, they have the right to do so, and it's very specific. It says at any time. Now, I appreciate your reluctance to break a contract in any way. I understand that. It is usually the cautious and safe and proper thing to do. But you have to abide by your charter. It's not like the contract is here and the charter is here and they're equal. The charter governs. It governs over ordinances, it governs over resolutions. And in essence, whatever council adopted that does not have the power to bind future councils to act contrary to your governing document, to your charter. There's a, I hate throwing around Latin words, but it's called ultra virus. It means it is beyond your authority. As an example, if your council or a predecessor council or whoever had adopted a contract that said that, let's not even say the attorney, if you'd adopted a contract that said the manager, the clerk, whoever, had a five-year contract and could not be terminated, you would have tied the hands of every subsequent council in a way that whoever voted on that does not have the power to do. Now, there can be consequences to breaking contracts. So it's certainly the case that if you break a contract and the other party relied on it to their detriment. If you had a contract with somebody to dig up some roads and you just decided you were going to break the contract, you may have that authority, but they can say, hey, we did the work thinking you were going to pay us. So if there's, you know, some reliance, there is an ability to be held accountable. But in this case, even if you do break a contract, it would seem that the damages would be at most eight days' worth of additional compensation. You may wish to reaffirm it, even if you do it, do terminate tonight. You can reaffirm it at your council meeting. Uh, the eight days doesn't seem like an undue burden, but this is not a contract with a third party. This is not a contract with a contractor or painter or water company or anything like that. This is a contract with your own attorney who certainly ought to know that that provision contradicts your charter. He certainly, whether he is, I, I certainly don't put myself in the man's head, but he ought to know that that provision is directly contrary to your charter, that it attempts to prevent the council from being able to exercise its not just rights again, but duties under the contract to act in the best interest of the village. I believe that there is also an ethics opinion that came out that said that cities or municipalities are required to have someone at arms length negotiate contracts with their own attorney, because clearly the attorney himself can't be the person who represents the municipality while they're representing their own interests. That's a conflict of interest, pretty obvious one. And that's why my understanding is there is an ethics opinion that says you have to get outside counsel to negotiate, which is exactly what this council is attempting to do by hiring another attorney from the village next door to negotiate. Since there seems to be some question about who negotiated this contract on behalf of the village, that's a real live question. It, it cannot have been Mr. Powell who negotiated on behalf of the village to make sure that the contract was consistent with your charter, which it, it must be. You know, laws are struck down all the time because they're unconstitutional, notwithstanding that it was adopted, notwithstanding that somebody passed it, legislature, the Congress, whatever. If it's against the constitution, they're struck down, they're void. And it would certainly be my opinion that a provision like that, that contradicts the charter, they're not equal. The charter is your supreme document. Anything that contradicts it directly should be void. I don't see here that there's some innocent third party that was relying on the fact that the village could or couldn't do this. It's your own lawyer who, again, I can't say what's in the man's head, but he ought to know that that provision directly contradicts your charter. And it's certainly not a provision that benefits the village. It ties the hands of the council. It's contrary to the village's interest. And in such a case, the village needed someone to represent the interest of the village and the villagers, not just the council, to have looked at these terms and said, wait a minute, we can't agree to this because it is contrary to the charter. And if that wasn't done, I think that it voids at least that provision of the contract, not the whole contract. But that provision contrary, directly contrary to the charter, seems to me to be something that would have to go. And in all likelihood, I mean, you know, different judges, different days, different, but it would seem to me that it's something that cannot stand. And I appreciate, you know, like I said, if it was some innocent third party that had relied on the village's word entering into the contract, I might have a different opinion, although frankly, whether damages could result or not is, is another issue. The point is, the, no village council, not the one that adopted that contract, not this one, not any, can adopt something that's directly contrary to your charter, that's, you know, in effect is unconstitutional. That's, that's my thing. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Attorney Geller, I appreciate it. You guys, uh, on the panel, before I, uh, ask if you guys have any response, any questions for Attorney Geller, let me go to the attendees, because, um, I see that there's a hand up, they've been waiting for a long time. Can we please bring over, uh, Sandra Valencia first? Ms. Valencia, when you get ready, how you doing? Please say, state your name, your address for the record when you get ready.
Good evening, Sandra Valencia, 86, 33, Northeast Miami Court. Oh, well, thank you for having me. Um, I just, I mean, after listening to all of you guys and I, I respect your, your position, Vice Mayor Nikerson, I understand, and especially knowing that you will be our major, uh, from November on, I understand your position on trying to do the things the right way. But at this point, I think that the right way should be, as, as I understand, um, you know, that clause within that interim attorney's contract, it goes against our charter, that clause should be void. So that matters if we, if we do it that way, the right way to do, the right way will be actually following, um, in my opinion, Anders', um, motion to terminate that contract. And there's all the things that I would like to add to it is, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Powell was the one who, um, didn't allow, uh, our clerk to stay for the 30 days notice, because it was in not in a good interest of our village to have her, because supposedly she was threatening us with lawsuits, right? With suing us, with suing us. Um, and I, if I'm not mistaken, I heard that Mr. Powell is already threatening us to actually sue us too, because we are terminating this contract, interim contract with him, right? So I truly do not believe that he, if this, tonight, you decide to, um, vote for, uh, terminating his contract, should be immediately today. He shouldn't stay for seven days, as well as he didn't do with clerk, uh, with clerk Janice Jacoby, because he was not in the good, in the best interest, because she threatened us to sue us. And I believe he's threatening us to, so I don't think it will be good either. So, um, that is my opinion. One of the things I, and that would be the last thing I want to add to it, not sure if any of the council person right now, I mean, whoever is on, on, I, I can't see that, who, who is in, in the meeting. But anyways, I think, uh, uh, Anders Urban and Luis Sirella were no part of the council when this document or this contract was actually negotiated or written or, uh, written by, I don't know who, um, in, but in the days. I don't know how long ago Mr. Powell started, um, representing us. So I will appreciate, uh, Mr. Nikerson, Vice Mayor Nikerson and Manager Alu, um, because I think the major is not here and Di Maria is not here. So any of you guys, if you can let me know who wrote this and let us all know who wrote and who negotiated this contract, this interim contract that actually wrote a clause that contradicts our charter, I would like their response right now.
Yeah, so it was in 2018 when the contract was, um, done. It was done through, first through the Administration and Finance Committee. And, uh, at that particular time, Councilperson Roman was the one that was in charge of, of, uh, putting it together with Attorney Powell. They said that they use outside counsel, um, but when pressed, they've never been able to say who the outside counsel was when asked repeatedly, but that's basically.
Basically, it seems like Mr. Powell wrote his own contract.
Well, that's what, you know, that's what, we don't know who the outside attorney was that wrote the contract. We, we've never been told who it was, we've asked, but, um, we've never been able, they, they never been able to provide us with the name.
Okay.
People worked that showed who, who that individual was, so. But from there, it went to the full council, I believe, and it was voted, um, in full council, and that's how it got to be.
No, I understand, and sometimes when you vote on, on the full council, you are actually delivered, you know, contracts or stuff really last, last minute sometimes. So I don't know what happened two years ago or whatnot. Um, but to be honest, at this point, it's the, another negative point to, uh, not following, you know, the intention of, and I, I really appreciate actually council person Urban bringing this to the table of discussion and understand that this is not, this is not a good, um, element right now for our village to maintain for, I don't know, whatever, how long is. But definitely the two first points are the major things. I truly believe that that contract was not written in the, in the, you know, in the good force for our village at all, at all. It was not in the good intentions of helping the village. So I, I believe that that item within that contract should be void, because it goes against our charter. And then from that point on, we definitely shouldn't actually have, if you decide not to, to, sorry, to terminate his contract, I truly believe that he shouldn't be in, in our, our representation whatsoever, one minute more, especially knowing what happened with, um, um, clerk, um, clerk Janice Jacoby, and that she wasn't allowed to actually have the 30 days there, because she threatened us. So I believe that he shouldn't actually be with us either, because he has 30 minutes also. That's all, thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you very much, uh, Ms. Valencia, I appreciate it. Can we please bring over, uh, how you doing? I see Councilperson, uh, Roman has joined us. How you doing, Councilperson Roman?
I'm good, I'm good, I'm sorry, I just got out of the meeting, so.
You're, you're, you're good. Have you been able to listen to, um?
No, I literally have just finished my day.
Okay, all right, all right, we'll, we'll, we'll try to catch you. Well, well, first of all, I hope your day went well, and, and, and good to have you here, we appreciate you joining us. Right now, we're doing attendees, I'm bringing them over, um, to see what they have to say, and, uh, and then we'll go back to the council, okay?
Okay.
Um, can we bring over Hugh Gladwin, please?
Okay, can, can you hear me?
Yes, can you please say your name and address for the record, please?
Hugh Gladwin, 400 Northeast 85th Street, El Perel. Yeah, I just, um, wanted to say that what I've heard so far. Yeah, I just wanted to say that what I've heard so far in this meeting, I hate to say, is just an example of the craziness that's been going on in this village. You know, I had, I was asking a neighbor, you know, why, after a year of trying, they had such a weak bunch of people who even responded to the RFP for a new attorney. She said, well, anybody that tunes into the meetings is not going to want to get to be a part of this craziness here. And this is just another example of it. So I totally agree with Vice Mayor Nikerson. We got to do this thing the right way. It's very straightforward to properly put it on the agenda and have it at the next council meeting, which is only a week away. And I really think somebody there should make a motion as soon as possible to to that effect and let's stop this crazy discussion. But, you know, have your way, you guys are have the job. So anyway, that's my opinion.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gladwin, I appreciate it. Is there anybody else from the attendees who want to speak or we move on? You guys, do you guys on the panel, do you guys have any questions for Attorney Geller and what he said? Because if if you do, I'll bring him back over. If not, then we'll leave him in the attendees for now. Any questions? All right, Councilperson Roman, so basically, well, you know what the meeting is about, Councilperson Urban called the meeting, and when I spoke, this was kind of like my stance. When I spoke, I said, we have two choices. I said that our first choice is if we're going to, you know, follow the village's charter or follow the attorney contract, because the attorney contract says, you know, the charter says that the attorney can be removed at any time by three votes. The the attorney contract says that the attorney can be removed by three votes, but only in a regular scheduled, regularly scheduled council meeting, and only if the 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 term of removing the attorney is in, is on the council agenda prior to the meeting when we're advertising. And so I said, that's our first choice. Like, which one do we think should take precedent? The second one, I said, our second choice is if we do say that we can, that we follow the attorney contract, and we say that we're going to, you know, try to put it on the, let's say, October, or Councilperson Urban tries to put it on the October twenty-seventh meeting for next week. I said that in the practice over all my years, the mayor was the one that kind of put the, put the agendas together for full council meetings. I said, so the question then would be, is a mayor, let's say, Mayor Ceballos or myself, whoever, but is a mayor, just just to know this going for, you know, for five, ten years into the future, is a mayor the only one that can formulate, that can put together a full council agenda? Or can other council members add what they want? I said, because if other council members can add what they want, then for next week's meeting on October twenty-seventh, Councilperson Urban can add the same verbiage that he used tonight to add it so that is, so that it follows the attorney contract, so that it's advertised and, you know, prior to the meeting and things like that, so that we're not in violation of the attorney contract. Other people were saying that, you know, the village charter takes precedence over the attorney contract. My only argument, Councilperson Roman, was that, I just said, we need to be careful because I don't, I don't want to set a precedence that the village of Elberta breaks contracts. And I want to set a precedence that the village of Elberta honors contracts. And I don't want any shadiness or murkiness as far as like how we conduct business. And I said that I'm just trying to, you know, stabilize things and just do things in the cleanest and and in my opinion, the right way. And the last thing I said was, I would rather lose doing the right thing instead of win doing the wrong thing. And that's all I said. But Councilperson Roman, you just got here, you haven't had a chance to speak before, if you want.
I mean, thank you. I didn't expect that recap, but thank you. I appreciate it. I I didn't think I was going to be on. I just basically, you know, I thought you guys would be through by now, but I'm glad I joined, I guess. You know, I I think everyone knows on the council, even the residents, how I feel about this. I really think that number one, this meeting tonight was a waste of time and also money. And, you know, when we, this is an item we could have discussed next week. So I am a believer of doing the right thing always and honoring contracts and also in having the history and being on the council and knowing the history of why we parted ways with our former attorney. This whole process is just, it's bothersome as a resident who has lived here for over ten years, not just as a council person. And so I think that I would love to see the gentlemen that are on the council do the right thing as we move forward. And honoring a contract would be that. That's number one. And number two is not rushing a process that may seem shady in some ways. That would be my preference.
Thank you very much, Councilperson Roman.
Okay, if I may, because it was.
Let me go first to Councilperson Urban, then I'll come to you, and then I'll go back to the attendees to Warner Dreher and then Sandra Valencia. Councilperson Urban?
Yes, so in response to wasting the time of the residents, tonight may not be a waste of time now that we do have Councilperson Roman. I think we are all dying to know who wrote the contract. Barring that, barring that, I won't even consider, I'm not even going to consider paragraph six of Attorney Powell's contract. And I say that after talking to attorneys and ethics. And so to the point of, I believe it was Resident Valencia, Sandra had said, look what the argument was presented without bringing this before the council regarding the exit of Clerk Jacoby. I had assurances from two attorneys, special counsel even, as well as interim attorney Powell, that no business of the village would be interrupted for the actions that they took. The following week, three committee meetings were canceled. So explain to me who's wasting whose time here once again. I'm not going to be cowed by this ridiculous argument. This game is old. It's fun for one person, maybe three, and what we're witnessing right now are two people who lost a vote fighting tooth and nail to go back in time. And I am telling the residents, every day that goes on from this day forward, that Attorney Powell still represents the village, could cost us dearly more than it already has. So anytime somebody wants to let me know who wrote that contract, I would then maybe entertain paragraph six. But after speaking with ethics and two attorneys, I'm not bothered by it in the least. There's nothing, there's zero shadiness here. Absolutely none. The council already made a decision.
Thank you very much, Councilperson Urban. Before I come to you, Councilperson Roman, is there anything that you want to say?
Yes, thanks, Vice Mayor. I just wanted to add that it's not, because I heard it from from a resident and now from a councilperson, this is not shady. I mean, what's shady is actually the contract that violates, that violates our charter, our government, government, you know, like our our guidance and our constitution, like the lawyer Geller said. So if anything is shady, is the contract, how it was written. We're trying to do the best thing here, and we try to go through a process, which has been asked for almost three years, and we never got an answer to. So I'm very new here. Yes, it is crazy going through all these meetings and going through all these discussions over and over and trying to trying to schedule this this meeting for the possible, you know, termination of an interim attorney. It's it's crazy, and it should be end with ones and for all and move forward. That's the way I see it. There's nothing shady about it, other than I repeat again, the contract, that it was, that's contradicting our charter.
Thank you very much, Councilperson. Before I go to the attendees, is there anything you would like to say?
You know, I think it's pretty ridiculous that we have gone, and and the same thing, I feel like it was, I mean, what is that Groundhog Day? Because everything that is be, that Councilman Urban just said is what he repeated at the meeting before, it's what's been going on. The contract, Vice Mayor, I don't need to be the only one answering on who wrote that contract because you were on the council as well. The contract was written and provided by Mr. Powell. It was reviewed by the Admin and Finance Committee that I happen to be a chair of. It was agreed upon at the Admin and Finance Committee. And from the Admin and Finance Committee, it went to the council, and there were five individuals on the council at the time. I don't know what the votes were because I don't have that history in front of me. But that was the process, and there was nothing shady about that. What I find shady, and what I call shady, was that we had a meeting, whenever it was, a couple of weeks ago or whatever, I can't, I'm losing track of time, and yes, we discussed a process that was flawed, a process that was broken because we had a cone of silence and we had another another, some type of clause stating that there was no communication between the attorneys and the council or the administrative staff, and still there was. And you guys voted, which is okay, because that's what, that's what democracy is, we're here to vote, okay? You guys voted on the fact that you're throwing out the, that process and that you were going to pretty much send out the RFQ again, but you're not instituting a committee to review it, which pretty much is saying, okay, we're going to take, get the same, we're just going to do the same thing over again. And then all of a sudden, we get called to this meeting to then, you know, let go of Powell, when in reality, we could have him till the end of the month, let him finish his contract, and that's it. And, you know, still do an RFQ process, still do an interim attorney, if that's really what you wish. This all seems very personal to me. It seems very, I don't know what the, what's going on, I don't know what's behind the scenes. It seems kind of weird that all of a sudden, Geller, who was fired by the village, is back on and is at this meeting, and it's wanting, and that that the council wants to bring back someone from the past who actually was fired for not doing a good job. This all seems very, that's what I call shady. That's what I say. I don't have a problem with, okay, a few of the council members are not happy with the current interim attorney, fine. Find another interim attorney. Or don't try to bring someone from the past back. And if you're trying to bring that person back, then let them go through the process again and do the right thing, and perhaps wait until you have a full council before you have, you bring in a new attorney into the village. So that it doesn't look shady, so that it doesn't look like you guys aren't doing the right thing. And that's all I have to say.
Very much, Councilperson Roman, appreciate it. You guys on the panel have anything that you want to say before I go to the attendees? You guys can say, Councilperson Urban, Councilperson Perella?
Yes, for for my understanding, the interim, there's nothing going against the interim opposition. It's not like we have to go through a process or anything. We can, once again, we can terminate the village attorneys at any time. So it's 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 nothing to follow a process to. I understand the point of, you know, trying to, this is what we got on the on the RFQ, and we don't have to go through that again, and that's why we actually agreed to go on and have it, have the whole process again. And whatever happened was an honest mistake, maybe, we still don't know where, if it was from interim attorney Powell himself, you know, giving the wrong information to the manager or the manager passing it on to us or to the, you know, applicants, and that's how it came out. So that is gone. We, as as it was suggested by Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor Nikerson, agree on, or at least I did, to go ahead and and start the process again. But that doesn't mean that we cannot terminate the interim position attorney at this moment or and 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 bring another one until this whole process is 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 over with. The whole new RFQ process, it might take a month, it might take three months. And as Mr. Anders said, I mean, here, we we're in the same position, that that's why Mr. Jacoby was actually pretty much thrown out of the village. Because on her thirty days of resignation, they said, well, there's allegations here. Obviously, she, you know, she resigned, and it could be toxic to have that person here that's, you know, alleging these and these and that. So let's just for the well-being of the village, ended up here. So the same thing could happen here. Interim attorney was already terminated as the vote went on, and so he's clearly, I don't say unwanted, but he didn't win the the new position, so that could lead to, you know, all things, I don't know. He might seem like a, like a, you know, honest man. I'm not saying, you know, he could, you know, do anything against the village or, you know, and but it, we fall into the same issue, which is, which President Sandra Valencia brought it up, and and that's a good point. So it's just, you know, it's, it's, again, the lawyer just said it, any council, this one, the one prior, or the one next, doesn't have the authority to go above the charter. So if it was wrongly approved, this contract, I think our best and the honest thing to do is to fix it. And how we fix it, we can terminate it at any time.
Thank you very much, Perella, I appreciate it. Councilperson Urban, you want to say something before I go to the attendees?
I do, Vice Mayor. You know, we keep hearing about Yunita Koby. Yunita Koby quit. Yunita Koby was not fired. She quit, and she then threatened to sue the village. I don't understand how anyone would expect to keep an employee for the thirty days, an employee that just quit, that clearly was going to sue the village and clearly had issues. How is that possible that anyone would expect to keep an employee under those terms? The village attorney and the attorney that was hired for labor did the right thing. They did what we asked them to do, what we pay them to do, which is to protect the village. That is what they did at that moment. So the fact that it keeps coming up that village, that we're in this position because of Attorney Powell. No, Attorney Powell did not fire the clerk. The council did not fire the clerk. Vamari Roman, councilwoman Roman, did not fire the clerk. The clerk decided to leave. And she left, and it wasn't under friendly terms. And at that point, we need to protect the village. It is our job to protect the village. It is our attorney, whoever it is, whether it's Geller, whether it's Powell, whether it's Smith, whomever you want to put there, it is their job to protect this village. And that is exactly what took place. The village was protected because Janice Jacoby.
And that is exactly what took place. The village was protected because Yunita Koby threatened, her attorney threatened to sue us. And that is what's happening. So this is, has nothing to do with Powell. Again, I'm gonna go back and I'm really passionate about this because I'm, 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 I'm like, my, like, my last, my last wit ends with this because it's gone so long and for so long. So many of you on the council, so many residents claim that this was shady business and that Powell was there for shady business. Powell has done nothing but a good job. Is he perfect? No, no one's perfect. But in the short time that he's been there, he's accomplished a lot more than Geller did in the 20-something years that he was there. And, 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 and I can go on and on, but I won't. But the point is that do not compare two things that are not the same. And what Hugh said was exactly right. This is, is a shame. It's a shame about what's going on and how this council is treating everything and how these meetings are happening. This is, it's embarrassing. I'm embarrassed, not only as a council person, I'm embarrassed as a resident. And this didn't, this just didn't, this didn't happen all along. And Vice Mayor, you've been on this council for a long time. It has not been like this. And so it's really, really sad that it's gone to this. And you're right, Perella. We don't need to keep our village, our interim attorney. And that, I said that already. You don't need to keep Powell. But the point is that if you're gonna do something, do it right. Bring in someone who, who's not familiar with the village as an interim. Go through the RFQ process again, the right way, without breaking. And don't tell me that it was a mistake. And if it was a mistake, then you know what? Someone needs to be held accountable. Because in my opinion, our administrator, okay, which is our village manager, knew exactly what she put together with Councilperson Urbom. And so I read the RFQ. I knew I couldn't talk to anyone. And if no one else in this council read that RFQ and knew that you couldn't talk to anyone. And if the attorney, the attorney who spent 20-something years in our village and also wants to come back knowingly, made those phone calls, then you know what? You guys are, are foolish to want to bring this person back. Why would you want to do that? Or you're complicit? Or is there's money involved? Or there's some shady business? Because I do not get what is going on here. I am completely, it's, I'm almost wishing I didn't jump on this call. Because right now, I'm extremely emotional over all of this. And, and it's because it saddens me. It saddens me what the manipulation and what you guys have allowed to bring, to be brought to this council.
Thank you very much, Councilperson Roman. Uh, Councilperson Urbom, I see your hand up before I go, um, to the attendees. And when I go to the attendees, Councilperson, I mean, uh, Councilperson Dreher, former Councilperson Dreher, you will be first. And then, uh, Ms. Valencia, what do you say? Councilperson Urbom?
I just want to state for the record that the issue that precipitated Clerk Jacoby quitting was an unresolved issue between herself and Councilperson Roman. I want to be very clear and state that for the record. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Councilperson Urbom. Um, I don't see Councilperson, I don't see, uh, Mr. Dreher's hand up anymore.
Vice Mayor, I will address that for the record because Yunita Koby did not put in writing that she quit because of Councilperson Roman. And if she, and she, Yunita Koby was asked several times by attorneys if there, if she had any allegations or anything that she could put in writing that she was treated unfairly. Yunita Koby was held accountable, just like the village manager is held accountable, just like the village attorney is held accountable, just like anyone is held accountable. So it is unfair to say that Yunita Koby quit because she was being treated unfairly or be, or unresolved issues with Councilperson Roman. She never put that in writing. Her attorney never put that in writing. And she, and that's just, whatever's being said on the record by Urbom was just false.
Well, let's, thank you very much, Councilperson Roman, uh, Councilperson Urbom. Let's, uh, you guys move on to the attendees. Can I please have, uh, Ms. Valencia over? Well, okay, hold on. Let's bring Mr. Dreher over. I think his hand was up and it went down. So let's bring Mr. Dreher over because I know I saw his hand up initially. First, and then Ms. Valencia will bring you over right after. Bring on Andrea. On Andrea, how you doing? When you get connected, just say your name and address for the record. Good to see you.
Hey, Vice Mayor Nickerson. Good evening. Can you hear me? Yes, that's, I take that as a yes, that big come up. Always good to see you. Uh, so it's, uh, 486 Northeast 87th Street, Warner Dreher. So, um, so listening to all this conversation, if I might ask, can I have, um, you know, try to understand it here because I, I'm, I'm listening in, right? And I, I'm, I'm trying to under- understand a few things from each other, council members, right? So, um, Councilperson Pirella, she mentioned he was the, uh, please correct me if, if I misunderstood. But you stated, uh, we're trying to schedule this meeting over and over, right? Uh, so am I assuming is this meeting right now that you guys have been trying to schedule this meeting? Or can you elaborate more on that? And, and you just said it's crazy.
That was Councilperson Urbom who stated that.
No, it was, it was Perella. I, I heard him say that as well. But let me, let me, let me see if he can answer. Is, is that what you stated, uh, Councilperson Pirella?
Yes, yes. That's exactly what I stated. Yeah. Um, that we, um, going through this process, we, um, had, uh, scheduled one for last week, believe so. And it wasn't properly advertised or the wording on the, on the, uh, on the, um, agenda wasn't, um, the right way to do it. And then now we advertise for today. And then we come with this, uh, contradiction again, whether, you know, it conflicts with the counter lawyers contract and our charter. And as, um, you know, it's just to, to discuss one, one, one item. And, uh, it's, to me, is like I said, it is just crazy, you know, moving forward and, and just being in this predicament over and over. So that's pretty much.
So, so Councilperson Pirella, so, so this is probably not the first time you're trying to schedule, or you guys in general. I'm not saying you, right, when I refer.
I never, I never called for any of the two meetings. Okay, yes.
But, but then there, who decided that, uh, so who, who goes ahead and schedules the meeting, right? Or I'm sorry, who, who advertises and, and decides the wording was not properly stated? Who, who, who stated that? Who stated that to you, Councilperson Pirella?
Um, well, as you know, because you were, um,
I did.
A former council person, yes. I'm supposed to be in charge of all of that, yeah.
Okay, so why is it, and good evening, uh, interim village clerk, uh, Latimer. Why was the, the first time that they tried to advertise the meeting? Why was the decision to state that the wording was not appropriately right?
Because when you advertise a special meeting, you have to state exactly what the business of the special meeting will be. And it was not on the advertisement.
So it was not on the advertisement. What does that mean? Is that the agenda or is that the information you're receiving?
On the notice, on the public notice.
Who, who sends out the public notice?
Excuse me?
So who sends out the public notice?
I don't, I don't know exactly which notice, which notice that, who sent it exactly, but it was a mistake. It was a mistake. It was a mistake. And we had to try to cure, you need to let me answer. It was a mistake. And in order to cure the mistake, we went to council to explain to them what happened. So the meeting was canceled. So in the protection of the village. We could have gone through with it, but I started getting calls from people who noticed that the meeting wasn't noticed properly. And I went out to certain council members and explained to them what was going on. And a decision was made to cancel the meeting. And we advertised it.
So let me, then let me ask again the question. So who sent that public notice that you just stated?
I, I believe it, manager, it was, I'm not sure if you sent it or.
Well, I was asked, um, to, um, by Councilperson Urbom to hold the other members of the council to see if they would be able, available for a meeting. Um, I did this, it was, uh, later on the Friday. And then I sent the, the information about the quorum being reached to our web, um, master to post on the village website and to the consultant that plans the meetings. But I am not aware, I don't know how things are supposed to be publicly noticed or whatever, because I was, I'm not a clerk. So I did it that way. And the clerk, um, was not available or, or saw it at the point. And then that's where we went from there, when she got involved.
Thank you very much, Chrystia, uh, for that explanation. So why wasn't the, the clerk, her responsibility of sending this public notice not available?
Wait, wait, what, what are we doing here? Cause, cause I'm not, I'm not going down this road. I'm, I'm not.
I do, I'm, I'm just trying to understand. I want to bring clarity.
Well, it was explained, sir. It was explained. The notice went out, the manager put it out. It was not done, it was not properly done. So because of that, again, we could have gone on with the meeting. We could have gone on with the meeting. But when I saw the, the notice, when I got the call and saw the notice, I then called certain council persons to say, hey, you know, how you want to handle this? And they went out, got an opinion and came back and we re-noticed the meeting. And now we're here.
Okay, so the, so going back to council, thank you very much, uh, interim clerk, uh, Latimer. So going back to the council person Pirella, this is your second attempt and, and to, and obviously the first attempt, obviously, let, let's put it this way, the, the public notice was not properly worded. So there was a failure to conduct the first meeting.
Right. Now that we finally got to this meeting and now we, uh, you know, we discussing, because this was the discussion, it's not, it's, um, to whether, you know, we're gonna, um, determine whether to terminate the interim village attorney and appoint a new one. And so now we going through the contracts, because as you know, we cannot discuss this and, uh, close doors or call each other or anything. So that's why we're here. And, and again, it's happening today, but now we, you know, we going back and forth with, um, the contradictory of, as you al- already know, like, uh, if you've been, uh, on the meeting the whole time, that, uh, the contract says something different than what our, um, charter says, uh, terminating the interim, um, attorney position.
No, so I, I just want to make sure that, because when there is all this conversation about shadiness, that's a concern to me, right? So that's when I'm trying to, you know, put together what certain council members are calling it shadiness, right? With the process that you're trying to bring up about as far as moving forward, right? And you trying to say, trying to schedule this meeting over and over and over. So there has been an attempt already by the council to
Right, to do the right thing, yes.
To have this meeting, whether it was whatever, whoever decided, right? It was the, the proper notice was not labeled correctly, then there's where we're here to that, tonight. So this is the second time you're, you're, we are trying to have this meeting, right? So, uh, so I'm, I'm just trying to understand this. And then just to, to, just to, you know, to what Councilperson, uh, Roman stated, that we honor every contract. Um, I want to ask Councilwoman Roman, where are we with paying out the closeout for the former interim clerk? I, I, I understand this is not part of today's discussion, but I would like to understand where we at. Because she, she's already departed, right, from the village. It's been a certain, maybe 45 days? Was that Councilperson, did somebody speak up?
Okay, um, Mr. Vice Mayor, may I make a comment to that?
Uh, yes, and then we'll have Councilperson.
Okay, since the attorney isn't here, I'm just going to say to you guys, you know, on the record, to please stick to the two items that were advertised as far as your discussion is concerned. Because that's how special meetings go. You can't opine or, you know, take votes or take action or make discussions about anything that was not on that agenda. And you can take it from there. I just want to go on the record and let you guys know that.
And that's fair enough. That, that's fair enough, our interim clerk, uh, was stating that. That's why I stated. Uh, but that's, that's what I wanted to understand more from the, uh, the comment that, uh, Councilperson Pirella stated, right? That you guys are, been trying to advertise this and this is not the first time or the second time, right? Or this is our second time trying to advertise this. But thank you.
And I can just say for clarity that, um, uh, uh, former Councilperson Dreher, before you came on, when the mayor was here, when the meeting first got started, uh, Councilperson Dreher, I mean, Councilperson Urbom was the first one who started to say, um, um, that, like, talk about the different meetings that we went through and how, like, you know, how long we've been trying to go through this process. And I think when you, once you got on, I'm not sure, um, is when you heard Councilperson Perella say it, but they both said it. So I just wanted to make that, uh, clarity. But thank you very much, uh, former Councilperson Dreher. Good to see you as always.
Same here. Thank you.
Can we bring over, uh, Ms. Valencia, please?
Good evening. Again, it's me, Sandra Valencia, 8633 Northeast Miami Court. Um, I have two, uh, comments to all the conversations, especially, you know, comments from Councilperson Vamari stating that, this has never happened in the, in the village. Um, this shadiness has never happened. Um, first and foremost, it's not true. We have encountered several, several, several times in different meetings throughout the years, especially the last three. A, a lot of things that I believe, uh, the new council, uh, people and the new major will, are, and are trying, especially, um, Vice Mayor, with, being, you know, the, um, Vice Mayor now, but our new major from November on. He's trying also to do things by the book. And I really appreciate that. I don't think that there is anything personal at this point. I see completely the opposite from the other side. I see emotion, very, very emotional and very personal, um, positions. Um, so I totally disagree with, uh, Councilperson Vamari's comments in regards to, um, for her to be able to say that this has never happened before. And I totally disagree with that, uh, point because it has happened, um, throughout the years. And it's not the very first time that even, um, some council people and also some residents have seen shadiness in the way that we, we, we do things. Um, it was a mistake, um, done 2018, probably, not reading rightly and correctly, uh, the interim contract with Mr. Powell. And understand that that clause that, um, goes against our charter being actually approved. And I totally, um, I'm in agreement that that was actually a mistake. And, uh, I want to ask the council, since I am just a resident and probably nobody to make any motions, if it's possible to actually, for you guys to call an emotion to get rid of that clause on that, uh, interim, um, contract, uh, in order for actually, you know, go, a, a contract that goes with our charter and not against. Because that, that clause, especially that clause, uh, should be void. Because it's completely in, 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 in opposite direction of our charter. So, uh, my question to probably Vice Mayor right now, because probably you're the, the highest standard in this, in this meeting. Because Mayor Koby just is not here anymore. I would like for you to, um, to, to, I, I would like for you to respond for me, to me, if it's possible for the council to probably make a motion to void that element within that interim contract. So then we can actually move along with whatever, uh, is that the, um, the conversations needed to be done and make the right decisions, um, tonight.
Yes, the only thing I would say, thank you very much for that, Ms. Valencia. The only thing I would say is, is that the, the language is really distinctive about this special meeting. And it's, it's those two lines about, um, you know, possible termination of Attorney Powell and then possible appointment of a, a new interim attorney. It doesn't say anything about, um, you know, you know, possible control on the contract itself. So I don't think in this meeting, we'd be able to do that. And if, if, you know, if, if those two items or at least the first item passes the way that, um, that, you know, some would hope it would pass, it would, you know, that, that kind of nullifies, uh, the contract itself because it would be a done deal, um, you know, stuff at that point.
No, I, I, I understand. I, I totally understand that. But seems, um, you know, the, the item regarding, uh, the way that the cleric, uh, was, you know, she resigned, absolutely, she did resign. Uh, but she didn't threaten this, the, the village when she resigned. Um, I believe her lawyer, I don't know the wording of whatever threat, uh, is acknowledged by the council. To be honest, I don't know if, if it's true or not, um, was done after the fact that she was not allowed to continue her 30 days' notice. was done after the fact that she was not allowed to continue her thirty days' notice. And I believe that that was the moment that probably, you know, the clerk and her lawyer reacted to, in that, in such a way. I believe that she just resigned for the reasons that she implied on the record in July nineteen meeting and is on the record. She publicly stated that she was mistreated by one of the council members and, and, and that council member is the council member, councilperson Vimari. And she stated that in record, on the record, in, in one of the meetings, in one of the council meetings. So I believe that it's probably not a written notice, but it was discussed and it was stated in public. So it is true. She was explicit on, on that meeting, July nineteen, twenty twenty, regarding the issues that she had, but, you know, at the time, whatever the issues were, sorry, July twenty nineteen, no, twenty twenty, twenty nineteen. That was when, you know, all her issues were put to the table, do discussion or whatnot, and especially to city attorney Powell, you know, for him to take, you know, action in regards to, you know, the situation with the clerk. And it was, it was not done properly, whatever or not. So she ended up quitting. And the lawsuit or whatever, the threatened, because I don't know if there is a lawsuit or not, I believe there isn't at the point, at, at this point. It was, it was actually proclaimed or stated by her attorney after the fact that she was not allowed to comply or to, or just finalize or finish her term, the thirty days' notice that she kindly did following the, her contract. And so one of the things, Vice Mayor, that you just mentioned, I'm not trying to, to say or call on the option of voiding the whole contract, but voiding that, that item within that contract that completely goes against our charter. I don't think, I, I, I believe it's probably possible to discuss. I don't know if it's, I'm not saying to void the contract, but especially an item that it was actually, I don't know, Ms. Redd, at the time, when back in 2018, was voted in for, you know, approval in the council. So my, my question again to you, Vice Mayor, is the possibility of a motion or whatnot to void that item within the contract, not the contract?
Yeah, no, so the, the writing is very distinctive for this meeting, being that it's a special meeting. And so the only two motions that can come, the first motion is the possible termination of Attorney Powell. The second motion is the possible appointment of an interim attorney.
Okay, I understand. And I want to leave this last comment on the record. If unfortunately or fortunately, no, I don't know, if the right thing to do is to move this motion to consider the termination of Mr. Powell's interim contract to the next meeting, the next council meeting, which is next week. I want to again repeat, Mayor Cudillius words stating that she won't be the one canceling or moving any item within the agenda for the next full council meeting. And it's important to all the residents to understand that she said that on the record. Thank you.
Very much, Ms. Valencia. I see you, Councilperson Urbam, but let me finish with our tenes first, and then I'll come, you'll be the first one back in, when I come back to the panel. Let's have Mr. Nottingham. No, let's have, let's have Nottingham come over first. Hugh, Hugh, stay right there, Hugh. Mute yourself for a second, Hugh.
Hello, everyone. This is Nariman Daravala, one-one-two, Northeast Ninetieth Street. How's everyone doing tonight?
How you doing?
All right. I'm doing well, thank you. I had a couple of questions. I was, this is for Mrs. Lattimore and Ms. Lattimore. Thank you very much for being with us and I appreciate you taking over the position of interim clerk. Okay, the first question I had for Ms. Lattimore was, you said that after the notice was misfiled and it was noticed, you said that you called several members. Which members did you call? Ms. Lattimore?
Uh, I spoke to Councilman Perella, I believe, Councilman Urbam, and I believe I spoke to the ma, to the mayor.
And you also said, thank you very much for that, you also said that when you reached out, those people got opinions on how to proceed. Either you, if you know, or the people that reached, you reached out to, one of those three, Mr. Perilla, Mr. Urbam, or the mayor, I don't know if she's on the call. If you guys could tell us, what was that opinion that you received after the clerk called you to inform you about the misfiling of the notice?
Well, the, the, the conversation that I had was with the, with the Ethics Commission. And then I also contacted several other clerks in the area who, to see how they would proceed.
Thank you. Mr. Urbam, did you reach out to anybody?
Yes, so I spoke to, I spoke to Ethics, that was pretty much who I reached out to immediately, was Ethics. Arrojo himself, I spoke to him in person. And then after that, I spoke to a personal friend who's an attorney. And then I also spoke with Attorney Geller. And I did, I did, and I did let Arrojo know, Director of Ethics, that I would be, that I would be contacting Geller. And there is zero issue with that.
I, thank you for that response. And I understand you saying that there is zero issue, but therein lies a possible issue. I've heard you say several times, excuse me, let me finish, I've heard you say several times in regards to this could lead to something, or this could cause something, or this, with note, when you don't substantiate it at all, but then you saying that this one thing has no possibility of having, of being an issue. But you've stated over and over tonight that things could cause issues, could cause lawsuits, could cause damage to the village. It could cause expense to the village, when you were talking about keeping, keeping Powell on or things having to do with the former clerk. So it's funny that you say that this one thing, out of everything else that you said could not cause problems or could not lead to anything else, this is the one thing that you decide to say has no, could, could nowhere be, have any impropriety to it? And that's not the question, I'm just saying, I'm, I'm making a statement, that seems very odd that you would make that statement on this one issue, when no one, no one even said that that, you calling Geller was the issue. You said that, oh, but that was no issue. I, I talked to, it doesn't make sense to me. My
Well, it makes sense if you understand what the next argument coming is.
Well, I didn't ask for clarification. I, I'm, I have another question for you, if you give me, give me a moment. All right, Mr. Perella, did you speak to anybody? After the, after the, after the interim clerk called you regarding the misfiled notice, did you speak to anybody at all?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much, sir. I appreciate that. Okay. And for this special meeting, who initially requested this meeting? Mr. Urbam, okay, thank you. I, that, that, I, thank you. Okay, so in the special meetings require how many council people to, to answer the call?
Three.
Three. Which three answered the call? If you know?
Clerk for that.
If you know, anybody can answer.
The quorum would have been Vice Mayor Nickerson, Councilperson Urbam, and Councilperson Perella.
Okay. And when the, when the meeting was originally filed, as, and we've concluded that it was filed incorrectly, did each of you know what the meeting was for? Even though it wasn't listed when it was publicly announced, at the time that you guys decided to say, yes, we're, we'll, we'll answer Mr. Urbam's call for a special meeting, yes, we can have a first special meeting, did you know what the special meeting was for?
Yeah, they, they knew what the meeting was for, because it was, it was emailed. The, the only issue was the public notice. It wasn't anything other than the notice to the public. Council always, council would always know what a special meeting is called for, because when you, when you polled them for the meeting, you tell them why the meeting is being called.
Okay. And it, and it was stopped right there, after you got to three, after you counted to three, you stopped making phone calls, you didn't need to make any more phone calls. So I, I understand that. So you, you, you did, there was no need for overkill, right?
Well, I, I wasn't the one who made the phone calls on the first meeting. It was the manager, so I'm not sure what process she used.
I called all five members.
That's how we generally do it.
Pardon?
Called all five members. I had to leave a voicemail message for Councilperson Roman, and I did speak with the other members. And Mayor Cudillius told me she was not available, and the other two members who were confirmed here stated that they were available.
Thank you, Ms. Alou. I appreciate that. Okay, the, the, the last thing that I ask right now, and this is to Councilperson Perilla, because he, he made a statement that we're not supposed to discuss things behind closed doors in, in pertaining to village business, you know, in respect to sunshine and things like that. So could you expand a little bit more on why you felt the need to make that statement that we couldn't discuss these things behind closed doors? And it seemed to be there was a lot of discussions behind closed doors?
No, there's no discussions, I mean, I, you know, that behind closed doors. I don't call, what I meant to say was we, we don't have discussions among the council, as you might know, because you're, you're, you know, you live with the council member. And, you know, we have to respect sunshine law and all of that. And we don't conduct business, what I meant to say, behind, other than being here on the dais and disclose, disclose any item or anything that, you know, you know, that is a business concerning the village or none of that. So that's what I meant. So it's not, it's, in, in the way, I, I forgot what it was for, but it was something saying, I, it was just to defend the fact that you're, you're saying why it's, you know, like the, like the contradiction between the contract and the charter. So, and that's why we, we were here discussing whether, you know, we should move these for the twenty-seventh council meeting or, you know, do it here. Because whether, you know, we all got the contract finally last week, I believe, I got it. And, and obviously, and I immediately called the, the clerk to, because that caught my attention about, you know, what says on the contract for the interim village attorney and what says in our charter. So that was the only thing. And what I meant to say again is that we are discussing here, because we were, you know, some residents and councilwoman Vimari said something about, you know, this being kind of like ridiculous, being discussing and this and that and something like that, and embarrassing and all of that. So that's what I meant, that if it's embarrassing for many people, well, that's the way we need to conduct business. Just discuss everything openly here, because we cannot do it, you know, somehow. So that, that's what I meant.
Thank you very much, Louis. I do appreciate it. And I, I want you all to know that, I know that it's, it could be very rewarding work, but I know it's, a lot of times it's very thankless work, and you guys do a wonderful job, in, in my humble opinion. I, I know it's not easy. And, you know, I know you have to adhere to a strict code of ethics. I do so in my, in my, in my personal life, in my business life. And, and I kind of come to expect it from other people, because I've, I've known so many, so many of you guys on a personal level. And I want you guys to know that we are behind you, but we have to have more clarity, less mistakes, more transparency, because the, the village deserves it. Not just I deserve it, my wife deserves it, you know, our chief of police and our great police staff. We, we as a, we as a, this very small village, we deserve the absolute very best. Our, our resources are strapped. We don't have the budgets to, to make mistakes. We really need to strive to get it right the first time. And if we can't look back and learn from the past in the history of our village and look back and say, hey, look, you know, nothing personal, but this just may not be the right direction to go in. We've been down this road before. This has had a chance. Maybe it's time for something new. And if you can see that in the very present moment with our current attorney, you should be able to see that. Take out self-interest, take out, you know, whatever, and just say, hey, look, our, our shared history, our collective reasoning said, hey, it's time to part ways. There, hey, this is South Florida. Attorneys grow on trees down here. They're like oranges. They're everywhere. We, there's no way you can not find a good attorney if you wanted to. There's no reason to get a retread. And that's what I see is being pushed and thrust, basically rammed down our throats, instead of saying, hey, look, let's do better for the community and let's do it right. Let's get it right this time. Let's get it right the first time. Let's not make any mistakes on the RFP. Let's not make many mistakes on the, on the notice of a, of a meeting. Let's not make any mistakes in how this is, this contract is worded. Let's start getting it right the first time. Can we, can we all say that we want to at least strive towards that? And that's, and that, that's how I wish to end.
Thank you very much, Nottingham. Appreciate it. This brings Hugh Gladwin over, so I want to bring Hugh over, then I'm gonna go back to the panel. If there's nobody else, we'll go to Councilperson Urbam, and then from there, we'll see where we go from there and try to close things out. Either way, we go. Mr. Gladwin, if you could say your name and address for the record.
Hugh Gladwin, four hundred, northeast eighty-fifth street, Del Portell. First place, I very much agree with what Councilman Perilla just said, that, you know, you guys have to have an opportunity when you're meeting there in the sunshine to talk things through, regardless of how it sounds or whatever. That's your only time, opportunity. I also happen to believe, or agree with Mr. Daravala about the last, very last thing he said, that this process of hiring a new attorney has been incredibly rushed. I agree with him that attorneys grow on trees like oranges in Florida, and there's some incredibly good ones. And this just seems rushed, but that's neither here nor there. But what I want to say is, guys, you got to get to it and vote. I mean, this, you know, I agree with Councilman Perilla, but I mean, this whole topic has nothing to do with how meetings got put on the agenda, the former clerk and everything else, you know? And, you know, I appreciate that you let people in the audience like me speak. But Vice Mayor Nickerson, if I suddenly started to talk for forty minutes about a leaky faucet in my front yard, I would expect you to say, you can speak on the issue that we have, but please don't waste our time otherwise. And I believe that's what's been going on. I mean, it seems like you have a very clear thing on the agenda to vote. You can vote to terminate that interim person now or not. It just seems it's this week or next week. More than anything, it's just a matter of money to me. I mean, if you terminate him now, then you're gonna have to pay some kind of legal fees, because I'm sure he's gonna sue the village to fight over the contract. And if you keep him for another week to do it cleanly at the council meeting, you know, then you got to pay his salary, I guess, for another week. So that's it. So please, I beg of you, go ahead and vote on this thing. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gladwin. Appreciate it. Can we bring Ms. Garcia over, please? I want you to say your name and address for the record. We get, I mean, we want you to connect it to us.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. Name and address for the record.
Give me a second to pause. Give me a second to pause the other video, because Facebook Live is lagging compared to Zoom. Hold on, one second. One second, one second. I can't hear you. Yes, double, double, double. Okay, here we go. Okay, here we go. Um, Ibis Garcia, five hundred northwest eighty-seventh street. As usual, I'm listening to this entire conversation, and so far, it's been an hour and forty-five minutes of a big circle jerk. Again, blame, 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 not me, not me, yes, you, yes, you, blame, 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 back and forth. It was me, it was you, it was not me, it was not you. The reason nobody wants to run for council, the reason nobody wants to be an attorney, the reason nobody wants to be involved with the village is because we can't stick to policy and procedure. We have a huge circle of junk that has nothing to do with what's on the agenda. The village clerk is being grilled as to why the meetings didn't happen because of policy and procedure. Everything is policy and procedure. She did what she was supposed to do. She made a point of pointing out, this is happening, this is not correct, the meeting can't happen. End of it, there should not be a ten-hour discussion as to why the meeting didn't or did not happen. The information is clear. Whoever wrote the the information miswrote it. The the meeting couldn't happen last week because it was improperly done. That's policy and procedure. You guys can't speak to each other outside of village meetings because of policy and procedure. We know all this, this has been discussed back and forth. I agree with with what the previous two speakers have said. I have no understanding why this meeting needed to happen today, why it needed to be rushed. Why couldn't wait another seven days for it to be discussed next week and not cost the extra money to have a special meeting to go around in circles for two hours? It makes no sense. This blame game, Mr. Urbom blaming Ms. Roman, Ms. Roman going back and forth, it makes no sense. None of it is on topic, none. We're wasting residents' time, we're wasting council members' time, none of us need this. You can't stick to the points of the agenda without talking about Mr. Denise Jacobi, who has nothing to do with this meeting, nothing. She's not on the agenda, she's not on the points of interest. What happened with her is a separate and mute point. The woman decided to quit her job and claim that she was being harassed at work. That is clear. That is basically her saying to us, I feel threatened, but I want to come back for thirty days, makes no sense. You feel threatened, there's no reason for you to go back to that job to be threatened for thirty days. The attorney did what he was supposed to do and he did it properly. At that time, when somebody says to you, I'm going to sue you, then you say, okay, then you can't be part of this anymore. You need to separate. So I agree that the village attorney did what he was supposed to do and did it properly for the residents. That shouldn't be an issue. Whether or not you can terminate him, yes, you can terminate him. That was part of the deal that was made in twenty eighteen and back when I went through all those meetings and heard that I I specifically remember asking, will this stop you from firing him if it's necessary? And the answer was clearly no. If it, if he needs to be fired, he can be fired. It will not harm because he's an interim attorney, it won't go against contract. The contract needs to be with the charter. If there's a point in the contract that basically states, line six or article six, as you were discussing earlier, that basically states the issue goes against the charter, well, that's simple, that is no longer a point that can be enforced. It goes against the charter, the charter is your constitution. When it goes back to Mr. Geller, I don't understand why we're going backwards. The man was here for twenty-six years, nothing personal. He's probably a very good attorney. But the problem what for me is that if he was fired because he did not have the time to be our attorney and do it properly, why on earth are we rehiring a person that was fired for not doing the job in the first place? I don't understand. And why is it being rammed like our previous residents say? Why is it being rammed immediately now, decision done? This couldn't have waited seven more days to the village meeting? Really, this two-hour circle, circle, circle of blame couldn't have waited until next week? I don't understand the rush. I said it in the last time we had a meeting. There are plenty of lawyers out there, we don't have to go backwards to someone who was here for twenty-six years. If he was and we parted ways amicably because he just didn't have time for us, that's one thing. But he was fired because he did, he he was not at meetings, he didn't make it to meetings. I remember over and over again that the attorney not being available, with another attorney taking his place for the night. A, B, C, and D, there were so many meetings that I that I noticed, there were issues with the previous attorney. So why are we going backwards and doing that again? Find a new one. We had three RFQs, one was Mr. Powell, one was Mr. Geller. We had a third person on that RFQ that was neither of them. Why he wasn't considered, I don't know. But he wasn't. We immediately went with either the one we have or the one we had. There are too many options out there for us to be limited to that. So I suggest you stop rushing the process and do it properly. If he has seven days to be able to do it properly, leave him for the seven days, bring it up in the next council meeting, do it properly, honor the contract the way it needs to be honored, and you won't have any more future problems. Let's not go backwards and make the same mistakes again. And please, for the love of God, stop going around blaming everything and everyone on somebody else and wasting time. We don't have that time, we just don't. I'm sorry for the passion, but this is extremely frustrating for for the residents. And I hope that you understand. I appreciate all of your work, I appreciate all of your help in running the village, but you need to make this a procedural, take the emotion out of it, take the blame out of it, and follow the agenda. Thank you.
Very much, Ms. Garcia. Um, can you please bring over one last time, Ms. Valencia, and that'll be it, and we'll go back to the panel. We also say for the record, you guys, that the question to um the village clerk about the procedure with the special meeting and stuff, that actually came from two residents. It wasn't started.
Hello?
Yes, your name and address for the record.
San Valencia, eighty-six thirty-three North East Miami Court. Um, I just wanted to say that I am in total agreement with the former resident who was talking, I think it's Ms. Garcia. I am in absolute agreement, but I want to just to enlighten Mrs. Garcia regarding the third lawyer that was uh one of the applicants uh to the RFQ that I actually followed through the whole process. There was a new a new lawyer, he was completely different, he was not Powell, he was not Geller. And yes, he was taken into consideration, actually um uh councilperson Urbom actually appointed him and made a motion to appoint him as the winner of the RFQ. So I just wanted to make that on on the record, to put that on the record. Yes, that third party that was not involved in our village whatsoever, that could have been probably a good thing or a bad thing, I don't know. Because unfortunately, uh, the mayor Kevias mistreated him really, really badly. I treated her really, really badly in public. And yes, he was not, he's never been a city attorney, but he is a very well-recognized, as far as I understood, a really well-recognized attorney. And his firm actually has represented, his firm, not himself, himself, itself, but his law, his firm has represented city, cities or municipalities in the past, or actually i- in the actual times. So I just wanted to make that clarity regarding, yes, the council uh had him as and as one of the potential city attorneys, new city attorneys. So I'm in hundred percent in agreement with what she said, but I wanted to make her clear and understand that, yes, he was taken into consideration and would be a really good consideration because uh councilperson Anders Urbom uh made a motion to get him as the winner of the RFQ, but unfortunately, he didn't have a second. Thank you so much.
Very much, Ms. Valencia. I saw, I saw your hand up, not even, you want to come over? No, you're good? Okay, bring, not even over one last time, please. Just say your name and address for the record one last time, please. I believe you're muted. Mr. Daravala.
I'm sorry about that, Neriman Daravala, one-one-two northeast ninety-first street. Um, my question is to Mr. Urbom. The last speaker, she just said that you made the motion to hire the third attorney, that I don't know the name.
Bob De La Fuente.
Okay, and that motion, um, could you tell me a little bit about the the motion and why you chose that attorney?
Oh, yeah, uh, as a resident, you know, I witnessed what happened to Mr. Geller. And so uh uh as I approached the RFQ process, I was uh initially hopeful that this third candidate, who did not have a history with the village, would be viable. I was glad to find that uh the credentials of himself personally, because he would be our attorney, but certainly of the firm that he was with, um, were more than qualified. Not only that, um, I believe uh Mr. De La Fuente himself lives next door in Miami Shores. So um, so it, you know, for me, it was a, it was a whole series of positive uh of notes that I that I saw. Um, and uh, and I'm not, so, understand that I I'm not opposed to Geller simply because of the past. Again, I witnessed what happened to him. Um, and so Geller was my second choice. Uh, certainly as, you know, again, the certainly as the RFQ process finished, this is why I believe the clerk has entered the discussion tonight in terms of former clerk Jacobi. Uh, I may have been the one who who started that ball rolling, but um the the purpose of me bringing that up is because of that scenario at the end of the RFQ process firmly eliminated Powell as an option from my personal uh perspective. And so, uh, you know, uh, realize that that what happened that night when Geller was appointed our attorney, by the way, what happened that night was a reaction uh from from the mayor, uh, which was honestly startling. Um, I agree with Sandra uh that what happened to Bob De La Fuente in that meeting immediately after the vote to appoint Geller was was horrible, to the point that I wrote him an apology letter. I wrote him an apology letter. So if there's any hope out there for the residents that uh we would have, uh, you know, that candidate return again, uh, I'm gonna tell you that his language was very clear, that's not going to happen. And
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm I'm I'm, no, Mr. Urbom, I really do appreciate you going into the depth. Um, the first part of what you said, I totally agree with the reasoning, one hundred percent. What I don't understand is, like I said before, just this rush.
I can break it down to you.
If we can find somebody, it's great.
I can get to the point on this and explain what, because I'm the one who called this meeting. So everyone, me, and I'm gonna tell you exactly why.
Wait, not, that's not my question, though. My my question is, if we we find Mr. De La Fuente so right for our community, why can't we go out and find another set of candidates? And not go back?
I don't disagree with you. However, part of the discussion revolving the uh the uh reality that Geller reached out, uh, understand that it was essentially advice from our attorney that put that ball in motion. So that, I will have that discussion all day long, but we've, but Attorney Powell needs to be terminated tonight.
Had had nothing to do with, my question had nothing to do with Mr. Powell. But my question to you is, why can't we have a new slate of well-qualified candidates and find five more, Mr. De La Fuente?
Well, thanks to intimidation, we're gonna have that process because we're doing the RFQ process all over again. So, you know, uh
And is it gonna be fully transparent, or is it gonna have community participation?
We're doing the RFQ process because because of that.
But it's not going to any type of committee, sir. You, I'm asking, why can't we have that transparency? Why can't there be community involvement in something so important? Something that's so divisive, we need to fire two attorneys in a row. We need to fire two attorneys in a row. This is something that does not need to be rushed.
Right, the RFQ process started in November of nineteen. Get, I'm not listening to this rushed argument. We haven't had an interim attorney for almost three years. Rushed, it doesn't fit the bill here tonight, I'm sorry.
I I I disagree, so you you're you have your talent, your opinion, I'm a talent of mine. But my thing is, for the good of the village, the village should be a part of the discussion, there should be committees. We shouldn't be voting not to have committees and rush through that process, that step. So if you say that, yes, this started in two thousand and ten, why are we, why are we rushing through a committee?
My question is, why is the desperation to keep Powell? There's a desperate, there's a desperate attempt to keep Powell.
And there's a desperate
Absolute desperation.
To Geller, and there's a desperate attempt to bring back Geller.
Thank you very much, you guys. Thank you very much, uh, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Uh, all right, you guys, I'm trying to close this up. Um, let's bring Mr. Dreher over one last time, please. I want everybody to have their voice heard. Mr. Dreher, just say your name and address for the record.
Yes, uh, good evening. My name is Warner Dreher, four-eight-six northeast eighty-seventh street. So, uh, other members have, you know, uh, agreed, right, with certain of the opinions or in favor of somebody else. I'm gonna go ahead and support here councilperson Urban. Urban has been, you know, bringing this for, I think he was the one who spearheaded, right, trying to get this RFQ in process. We've had the interim village manager for, I'm sorry, interim, uh, uh, I apologize, the interim attorney for some time already, right? And and I think he he deserves credit. Why do you guys, you know, I I hear some of the residents, uh, per council, I'm sorry, Evie's who was actually, who ran for council, right, who was in big favor with the mayor, right? And now I hear the, one of the mayor's husband, right? Not to, I'm sorry, the the, one of the councilpersons. Why are we, are we getting this, like, not support from the, you know, councilperson Anders, right, trying to move forward with his, with his motion, trying to move forward with what he sees what the village is? So that's that's the whole point here, uh, that councilperson Anders, you know, you definitely need to give it, be given some credit. You're, I I feel you're bringing this with the, you know, the right heart, trying to move forward, the village, and let no one discourage you, no one. If it's because you're getting here, uh, somebody who is a resident who has to have some favor or friendship with some specific person, do not let this discourage you. Move ahead, move ahead what you feel is right in your heart, as the others have made as well, where we're we're here right now today. So, you know, that that's the support I give you tonight.
Thank you very much, uh, councilperson, former councilperson Dreher, appreciate it. All right, you guys, I'm gonna move back to the um, to the panel. All right, so you guys heard me at the beginning of the meeting, you guys kind of pretty much know where I'm at. Um, you know, I had those two choices. Uh, choice number two was answered, which was the one about, um, you know, the mayor and the full council meeting agendas. Um, we heard that any councilperson can add anything um to the full council meeting agenda. Uh, our next full council meeting is next week, it's uh eight days away, it's next Tuesday, um, October twenty-seventh, I believe it is, uh, next Tuesday, October twenty-seventh. Just to be totally, I mean, you guys heard me speaking at the beginning of the meeting, just to be totally clean and clear, I would rather go, I would rather wait seven days, um, have this at the full council meeting, have councilperson Urbom, you know, through the clerk or whomever, um, you know, through the clerk. I was gonna say whoever or the village manager, but it's probably gonna be through the clerk, through the clerk, you know, I I guess around, because usually our agendas go out around like Friday, Saturday, or Friday, something like that. So Wednesday, shoot, you can, tonight, you can, you know, send an email and say, hey, on the upcoming full council agenda, uh, you know, I I would want to have, you know, this exact language or whatever, as one of the agenda items. Do it, you know, do it right there. So it's therefore, it it affords everything that's in Attorney Powell's contract as far as um, being advertised prior to the council meeting, and then, you know, being discussed and possibly um action item on the council meeting or whatever. That would be my suggestion, you guys, as I said in the beginning of this meeting, uh, at seven o'clock. Uh, councilperson Urbom, what's yours?
Yeah, I'll just say that we uh voted to uh end Attorney Powell's contract thirty days ago. And I to not fire him tonight is to not fire him tonight is kicking the can down the road. It's not doing the business of the village, and it's doing a disservice to the residents.
Councilperson Perella, Councilperson Roman, and then after that, I'll ask for, Councilperson Urbom, I'll ask for a motion for your, for your thing. Councilperson Perella, Councilperson, Councilperson Perella, or Councilperson Roman. You guys good? Councilperson Roman, you good?
I'm good.
Okay, thank you very much, Councilperson Roman. Before I go any further, ask for a motion. Anybody else want to say anything? Manager Lou, Chief Magnuson, Clerk Lattimore, you guys are good? All right, okay. Do I have a motion, or can we have read, you guys, into the record, the first motion? Count, Madam Clerk, can you read that? That, just a sentence for the first item, just a sentence, so we know what this motion would be about.
Oh, okay. Well, this would be a motion, a, a motion after this, after the discussion for the possible termination of the interim attorney's contract.
Okay, thank you very much. Do I have a motion for that?
I will make a motion to terminate Attorney Powell's contract tonight.
By Councilperson Urbom, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilperson Perella. Do I have any more discussion, anybody on the panel?
Yes, you know, those of us on the council, including the mayor, including Councilperson Roman, we all know every piece of communication that's taken place going back to before the night that we chose a different attorney. And we're here tonight because three people agreed to be here tonight. And so, you know, I take to heart what Mr. Gladwin said earlier, in terms of, you know, his frustration, but he also acknowledged that we're the ones up here to do the job. And so, I, knowing what I know, am more than confident to proceed with this.
Thank you very much. Do I have any more discussion? Do I have any more discussion from anybody on the panel? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can please have a vote on the motion?
Councilperson Perella?
Yes.
Councilperson Roman?
No.
Councilperson Urbom?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nickerson?
So you guys, this did not pass two to two. We need three votes. It cannot pass with a tie. Again, I would say you guys that as soon as this meeting is over, sometime before Thursday, you guys email the clerk, Councilperson Urbom, this was your agenda item, I would, I would say you should email the clerk and say, "Madam Clerk, on the upcoming Tuesday, October twenty-seventh full council meeting, I would please like to add to the agenda the item, and put this exact, these exact two items, the same two items, on the agenda for the council meeting," and that would be my suggestion, you guys. I think, I understand the frustration, you guys. I think in the long run, this is the best way of doing it. That's my opinion. Like I said, I would rather lose the right way instead of winning the wrong way, and I think doing this, you guys, we, we set a good precedent that we honor all contracts and things like that going forward, years and years into the future. Council, I mean, Madam Clerk, go ahead.
Um, for, for clarification and procedural purposes, if someone wants to request that, they can give me direction tonight to put that on the upcoming agenda. They don't have to send it in an email or wait until, just for clarification.
Uh, Council, thank you very much, Madam Clerk. This is why we love having you here, Madam Clerk. Councilperson Urbom, if you would like to give the clerk direction tonight, it's up to you, or if you want to, it's up to you, it's yours. Councilperson Urbom, are you?
Regard me, sorry, I had one of the kids repeat, please.
Councilperson Urbom, if you would like to, the clerk just said, and made it clear that if you wanted to.
I know the rules. I know the, I know what I need to do.
So do you not want to do it right now? You would rather wait and do it by email?
No, no.
You would rather wait and do it by, and do it by email?
I'm sorry, is there a hurry, is there a hurry now? Are we all of a sudden in a hurry?
No, I'm just asking.
Okay, then I'll, I'll handle it in an email at a later time. We can, yeah.
Very, very well. Thank you very much. Is there anybody else, you guys? We're gonna move to good and welfare. Is there anybody else from the attendees that wants to come on and say any last words about anything at all before we get out of here? And I ask for a motion to adjourn. Any hands? I'm seeing none, going once, going twice, going three times, gone. Before I ask for a motion to adjourn, anybody from the panel? Any last words? Anybody want to say, Councilperson Urbom, Councilperson Perella, Madam Clerk, Chief Magnuson, Councilperson Roman, Madam Manager? Anybody have any last words before I ask for a motion to adjourn? We are good, everybody's good. I'm seeing none. Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn, you guys, this meeting? I have a motion to adjourn by Councilperson Perella. Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a second by Councilperson Urbom. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Hearing no nays, the virtual special council meeting for Monday, October nineteenth, two thousand and twenty, is adjourned at nine seventeen P M. That is my gavel, since I have, and you guys take care. I will see you guys next week. Everybody, all the residents, we will see you next week, next Tuesday. You guys take care, have a great night, you guys. Take care, bye.